Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion, please, to bring the meeting to order? Sue and Heather, thank you. We have a very unique agenda tonight, one item. So any conversations we have from the public, we're going to have a public session for comments. Please keep it short, so no more than five minutes. State your name. And at that point, let's start the public comment session. Topic has to pertain to the capital project. We have anybody?
Good evening, my name is Brian Hallfield. I wasn't really prepared, I didn't know we were going to be speaking. I guess the reason I'm here is probably a couple of months ago I sent an email to the board just with my opinion and recommendations as far as what I believe we should do with the capital money. My feelings were air conditioning, given what we've just went through with the pandemic. And I think the overall air quality in the schools could be improved. That would help facilitate learning a little bit more effectively for a couple of months a year. In addition to that, I also thought that some improvements to the field out back, the varsity football field, if we could consider putting turf on that. I know it's a big expense upfront, but I think going forward, when you're looking at the maintenance costs of maintaining it, cutting it, fertilizing it, those will be eliminated and over time the overall cost will be reduced. I just see the rear of this building as a good location for the community to come together every Friday night, have a nice event where you have all these families out there supporting each other. If you can look at maybe concession stand, doing some merchandising back there, it would help offset the courts and eventually be something you generate money with. You see other towns that have these big sports complexes now. They generate a lot of money through these clubs. Maybe something we can also consider is renting that space out at certain points when we're not using it and have it be a moneymaker for us. So again, I know it's a big expense upfront, but I think you see the results. The other field you guys already put in, it's being used constantly. And I think if you expand that to the varsity field out there, I think the advantages and benefits of that will just continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hallfield, if I could just ask a question. So is it your understanding that students are using the turf field more than the regular grass field, given the preference?
Oh, absolutely. I think if you ask the kids, they'd much rather play on the turf, they're excited about that. We go to these other school districts that maybe aren't any bigger or better off than Highland and they have these complexes already. And you walk up and it's impressive. You see them, they get to play under the lights. You look at pictures of our field this past year, you can't even see our kids' feet because the grass is up above their ankles. So I just think the kids get excited about it, whether it's Marlboro, whether it's Roundout. You go to these big facilities, these huge bleachers and these nice press boxes and it's a nice thing to have. It's a nice thing, and you get a big turnout. You go to these different school districts and you have hundreds of people in the bleachers. And it's a nice feeling for the community, for the school district, for the town. It's exciting and it's fun and it's a fun family event. And you get these kids that instead of doing other things on Friday night, they're out with their family at the game, hanging out, having a good time with their school. They see their teachers, their principals there. It's a nice thing for the town and the community. And when you look at Highland, you don't really have anything else that brings people together. This could be that place where everybody gathers. Thank you.
Just a quick comment. I appreciate your comments, but I think the community and those in attendance here tonight will get a better understanding of the process that we're going to go through this evening. Because it's not just simply, of course, I'm an advocate for athletics. I've always been and I will still be. But the process that we have to go through and how building aid is applied to athletic fields, parking lots, educational facilities. So there's a ratio there that we have to work with in order to put this whole project into one capital proposition. So we are anticipating, and I think you probably saw that on previous board meetings, that we might be going to a proposition, a base proposition and proposition one, proposition two. So I think after you hear the discussion this evening, you're going to get a better understanding of what the board has to do to follow through with this process and make everybody in the community who are stakeholders get a fair share of what they really wish to have in the project. So I think you're going to get a better idea at the end of this process tonight.
My name is Janine Gemmell. I'm also here just to state a few important points. I know there's a lot that we need to hear to understand how the capital campaign works, how the budget works, and how you're able to divide that up amongst various things that the school needs and so on and so forth. One of the things that I wrote about in the letter is why it's important for, I don't want to say it's just a turf field, but I tried to expand upon that. And what Highland needs is something more. The turf field is not just a turf field. It potentially, that whole area potentially can become an outdoor classroom. And after the past two years that we've all had, we need to think outside the box of different ways that we could have backup plans for our students. Highland is a great community. I grew up here, I'm a graduate of this school, I have a lot of pride of this school. But not much has changed to develop or enrich the youth of this school. And we need to find alternative ways. So yes, a turf field will help the athletics, but an outdoor classroom can help the theater, the arts, music. Instead of putting us in an inside auditorium or canceling a band concert, if we had a space outside, granted, I know we're in the Northeast and the climate, but if you had a space outside where you can have an outdoor space, where you could have a band concert, a chorus concert. We need to think bigger than just athletics. We need to find things that'll help enrich our children's lives. We have good academics, let's build off of that. Let's figure out what we can do to help all of those extracurricular activities to help our youth. Because there are other school districts locally that have things. And yes, our kids want to feel pride when other areas come into this Husky Nation, right? That's what we call ourselves. We want them to feel that pride. So we need to think outside the box and figure out when we do have to put it up for a proposition where the community sees the value. It's not just for athletics. It's for the community, it's for the theater, it's for the arts, it's for music. It's an outdoor classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public comment? Okay, that closes out. Okay, old business, proposed capital project discussion.
So in front of you tonight, we went through, and I know that there was a presentation by Bernard Donigan's associates at the last meeting costing out the four scenarios. What we did this evening is we pulled out some highlights just to focus attention on what the, under a 100% taxable assessed value of a home, we costed out just on that and then hopefully we can extrapolate out from that. Instead of making multiple charts, we tried to put everything on one page. So if you take a look at the cover, I think it's blue and yellow, it looks like this. I think everyone has that. You'll see that the 12.7 project has 0% impact on the community. The 12.7 plus a 3.1 turf and track has minimal impact on the community. $4, $3, $1, whether it's the exemptions, the star exemption, or no exemption. The 15.5, that is also a 0% impact to the community. Then when you add the turf and track to that, you'll see the numbers as they go across. Another point of information is we all know that the BOSI's project was passed in the community. So we have options on how to finance that project. We can do it one of three ways. We can do a five-year cash project, and I costed out with Bernard's office, Bernard Donigan's office, what it would be based on a $100,000 taxable home, what that project would look like if we did a five-year cash project, whether we financed it for five years or we financed it over 20 years. Now, my apologies, I was ill at the last meeting, but I did hear that there was conversation about possibly talking about the BOSI's project being incorporated into this again. My recollection from December is that we had decided, and I could be wrong on that, but I went back and my notes said that we had decided that the BOSI's project was going to be a standalone and then we would look at our project differently. So I'm not sure if that was a change that somehow got lost in translation, but I think that's probably one of our goals this evening is to determine, what are we doing with that BOSI's project? Are we going to somehow incorporate it in and see what that costs out overall? Or are we going to keep that as a standalone and then just talk about our items? The other thing that I think as a goal for this evening is I think we need to come to some resolution on some of those big-ticket items. In this presentation, or this representation in this chart, we're talking about the turf and track, but we need to make sure that we're not turning a blind eye. If the maintenance building is something that we need to discuss and that's something that the board would like to entertain, I think we need to determine that this evening so that we can start putting those figures in there. That would be the same with AC across the district. So again, my recollection was we were looking at two propositions, possibly a base project, as Mr. Barone said, and then a base project plus a turf and track project. And the turf and track would be contingent upon that base project also passing. So project one would have to pass before project two could be considered. It would be in conjunction with one another. And so that's my recollection, so I'm ready to open it to the board and we can start those conversations about those items. I think if we can get to those goals tonight, what are we doing with BOSI's and what about those big-ticket items? I think we'll be well on our way to getting this project in a place where I think we can all feel comfortable tomorrow moving forward.
Joel, in my mind, and I just sent out an email earlier to you and Tom, I'd like to establish first what we're looking at as a date to have the propositions go to the voters. Because I think we have to back up, Lisa, we have to back up 45 days or something to that nature. So if we're looking at an October deadline, budget vote, we got to back up 45 days. And that's our drop dead date for us to come to agreement of what we're going to put forward. So I think that's critical to get this thing off the ground. I have multiple ideas. I mean, I think I mentioned at the last meeting about outdoor pavilions for the educational purpose. I know Janine brought that up this evening. The maintenance building is one on my radar also. We have the turf and track. So I mean, we have a lot to go through and if you're looking at October, you got to back that up to August. And August is summer months and we don't have the opportunity to meet every week because everybody, some people are on vacation. So we have a short window, so we have to really figure out that date and back up to 45 days or whatever it may be.
Like they said, it's been published, so it's even for them.
Correct. And I would say to that, when we entered into these conversations back in the fall, we thought we were moving forward. We were looking for a May vote and we saw that timetable coming up on us and we wanted to have everything done by now for a May vote. When we went back to Bernard Donigan's office and said, if we were to push it out, where could we push it and still fall within that falling dead? I don't want anyone to take this the wrong way. I don't want us to become complacent and think if we move it to October, November, we have more time to figure it out. I think we've been granted a little bit of, I hate, I don't know what the right word is. We've been given a little bit more room to have these conversations and be more robust in what it is we're looking at. But that date, as you said, is going to creep up on us very quickly and we want to have everything in place. So I think it's important that we come to some conclusions soon.
That's why we're here now. That's why we pushed for this date.
Exactly.
I think May was going to be too soon.
I agree.
So there has been, another strategy is getting it in there in the October timeframe, which I think is what we're looking at. The last, I kind of reviewed that information. And you don't want to get to the worst of the weather and get into Thanksgiving and all that. So we're looking at the October timeframe. You know, I think we've been given all the information that we've requested and there's no reason that in the next few meetings, we can't come up with something concrete. This is a focus, it's butting right up against budget process and it should. I'm up in the, you know, I don't, I believe that the community needs to have the opportunity, again, going back to some things I already stated. There's two big investments that other schools are investing in that we have not. Climate control and turf in your athletic facilities and everything that entails. By delaying, it just gets more expensive. I remember when the track and the field and all of that stuff was $1.7 million. Now, just the turf field is $1.7 million, the track is $1.3. You want to wait 10 more years? Sure, pay $6 million. Eventually, we've got to take on some of these priorities. I agree with some of the members of the public who spoke this evening that this isn't just about athletic fields. It's about your school, what kinds of activities you can host there and the community feeling, what student, I've heard a lot about, I've heard a lot of adults, but what students expect of their facilities moving forward. And I think if you take the time, our student rep isn't here tonight unfortunately, but I'd like to hear our student reps' opinion on these matters and what it means to students. There's a reason why phys ed fields are only going to the turf portion and not the grass. And I think that that criteria in that decision-making would apply to any of those instructional classes that want to go outside and use a facility. Again, I've also heard that we've got the best natural grass field around. I hear adults saying that. I know that in the evening, when it comes time to play, that field is damp. We know we're always messing around with the drainage there. So you know, one or the other, I'd like to see the board advance the facilities of the school district in one of those directions, if not both. But we know that that's costly. But eventually, we got to move into that ground. But I am prepared tonight to speak to some of the other items that I believe could be delayed. Here, they might have been part of the BCS for various purposes, but I just think that those are areas that have been addressed pretty recently. I'll go right to anything with food service. We have an outgoing, now, mind your state, we have an outgoing food service director. We don't know who that, I wouldn't put any money into this capital drop, project, into food services, equipment, anything. Why? Because we know as soon as you bring in a new cook in a kitchen, they think that the burner goes over there, the oven's supposed to be over there, they're going to change it. So why address something that the people addressing it aren't the ones who are going to use it every day and follow through every day? If it's a safety issue, probably should have already been addressed. When I go through some of these, I think about our maintenance in the building and there is some level of maintenance. I don't know, unless it's done in the summer, I don't know how much major maintenance we do in those 10 months during the year. Or are we using contractors to maintain our systems? Like what major projects are we doing in-house that has, that we haven't used to go outside? I think that's something I'd like to hear. Because we've been doing capital project and capital project. And I will tell you that one of the items I'm going to talk about tonight, and I'll let it go because I know everybody wants to talk, the lights across the buildings coming in at hundreds of thousands of dollars, that to me screams EPC down the road, not necessarily part of this project. Anyway, that's enough for now.
I'm with Mike that we need to just get this moving. Since September, we've been having these conversations about, you know, about the capital project. We have a lot of information and I just think we have to make a decision. I know last board meeting, we did decide on October. That was my understanding that we walked away that that was the agreement. So I'll pass it along, but I just think I'm in favor of the proposition for the athletic field. I spend a lot of time, as many of you know, on the fields and I see other areas and we are far behind. And just like was mentioned, the pride and also being creative in how we're using that space. I just think there's a lot of opportunity to enhance our facilities and we're long overdue. So we didn't pass fee 2012, whenever the last 2012, I believe, and we have another shot. If we don't take that opportunity now, I don't think we'll have it for another 10 years or so. So I just think that's something that I would put behind on the proposition two.
Couple more comments that I have. I had asked this morning to have this support service committee meeting, our pre-referendum budget review, to get an opportunity to look at this document. It kind of spells out what our design team had put together prior to implementing the color-coded sheets with all our budget prices associated with it. And you can see in here, we are doing some climate control in various areas of the common areas, I'm going to call them. In the high school, it's the auditorium, it's the gymnasium, it's the cafeteria, it's the library. I believe in the middle school, it's also upgrading air quality into the library. Elementary school's got some area there too. So we are addressing that. I also asked this morning for Victoria if we can project what our fund balance might be come June 30th. Because as you know, we put that capital reserve in place seven, eight years ago. We only have a few more years left on that capital reserve. And if we are able to put, fund that a little bit more come July 1, we can probably increase the base of this project considerably with no impact to the taxpayers. So that'll mean that we can probably bring into that base project with no impact, possibly a turf field, I don't know. I don't know how that ratio will work. Or outdoor educational pavilions, depending on what we can get out of that. Or a maintenance facility. We've, and I'll preach this again. The community went out and spent and financed over $500,000 worth of maintenance equipment. We get buses every year. I mean, we need the facilities to keep these, this equipment in safe housing and being maintained on a daily basis for the most part. And we need those quality facilities to do that. So I think as we move this process along, I mean, we got to keep all those things in mind. And again, like Joel said earlier, I mean, we don't have a lot of time if we want to go for October. I mean, you back up to 60 days, you're in the middle of August.
Just to also mention, with the date, the October date, so 45 days, 49 days out from that to make sure we get this out there. I think it also is going to be a campaign to get people to understand what it is that we're going to be asking them to come out and vote for. I think I mentioned it back in November or December when we heard that we could go to October. Getting placards and things of that nature out on that field so that folks that come out Friday night lights, they're able to see the project. And maybe we could have some representatives there to answer questions of folks. Obviously, we'll have our community forums, we'll go out, we'll take it on the road, we'll do whatever we need to do. But I think educating folks so that they know what it is that we're putting in front of them, I think is, we're going to need some time to do that. And we want to do that in a way that is obviously going to get us a positive result. So that's just one more plug for trying to move things along a little bit faster.
One thing we should do as we're looking at the big-ticket items, and I think hopefully each board member weighs in on this before we jump to something else. Turf field, yeah, nice, good. We already spoke that we're probably going to be replacing a really nice grass field, but we're changing, we're moving to the future. So I can go in that direction with the turf field. Track really should be done at the same time. But on top of that, press box and some of the bleacher areas around that, we speak to the fact that that needs to be done. We have a lot of expensive equipment up in that area and I just want to see it protected to protect our investment. So it'd be hard to kind of part this thing out and only do a field or a field and a track, but then leave that other area out when you're going to have the area disturbed for whatever time it takes to construct that facility and that field. That we should really consider doing the field, the track and the press box area at the same time, package that all together. Maybe not all the bleacher work that we're projecting, but try to put that whole package together as one. I think that makes sense. Thank you. I'll speak to an item on here that I think I would remove. I would need more data because they sound good. Let's talk about generators. Generator for the middle school, quarter of a million dollars. For what? I could understand the high school where you have your freezers for the food service. But you tell me here in the valley, in the past 10 years, where have we been without power for longer than six hours in the school that a generator would help? I might be shortsighted. I'm ready to debate. Do we have any communications infrastructure at the middle school that needs to be supported, longer than an eight-hour battery life or 12-hour battery life might support? Why? Excuse me? Why? If the whole community is without power, are we going to have school or is school canceled? So we won't lose anything if that's down and dies? That's all up here? Is that correct?
I believe so.
Yeah, okay. We have no other kitchen equipment? What's a generator at the middle school going to do for me now? You like generators.
Well, I think Mr. Miller can back me up on this. I know we had a situation here at the high school and a while ago when we lost a leg on the three-phase and we had the possibility of losing all of the food that was stored in this area and probably the possibility of burning out motors on some of our air handling equipment and such. And if you start adding that all up, that $250,000 generator is well worth it over a period of 10 to 15 years. I don't know if you'd allow Mr. Miller to speak on behalf of a generator and what the usefulness of a generator would be.
At the middle school? Here, I could understand. Yes, we store food, we got a lot of freezer space.
We have the air handlers, we have motors, we have three-phase motors, we have food stored, we have equipment stored.
But when there's no power, how is that hurt?
Our biggest freezer is in the basement of the middle school.
Okay. So our food is stored down there for food services?
Not all of it, there's freezers everywhere, but our biggest freezer is in the basement of the middle school. Allocated space that we like to use.
Right.
It's in the home room down there next to the records manager.
Right.
That's the biggest freezer we have down there. Plus it's also to ensure that we have fire alarm systems, that all that stuff that's still up, it stays up while building is one-off and fire abilities there.
And Mike, let's flip this on its ear. What if there was an event, a natural disaster or climate issue that seems increasingly more likely, especially in the winter and it affects the entire community? Where is the community going to be relocated for emergency services in our schools? Even if we don't have school, in an emergency situation, we're going to be relocating families to the high school, the middle school and the elementary school. And that's what happens to every And that's what happens through every town throughout the U.S. And
In the interest of transparency, none of the generators can carry the heat.
But they, will they be able to carry the, the heating? The heating system would be able to operate?
They'll carry, they'll carry some of this, some of the infrastructure. They don't carry all the infrastructure, but they don't cover all the lighting and everything that's going on.
But in terms of, the heating structures would move, I'm speculating in the winter, should things go down, we needed a warm environment to house families or say there's a flooding situation.
Some of that works. It won't be covered.
Just flipping it on its ear, not.
Again, when in the past 20 years, maybe once you would have used that. You're, you're, you live along the Hudson River in New York with tremendous electrical infrastructure. Talk to me. What do you got there?
I think that the loss of power is becoming more prevalent than it was. Years ago, we never lost power. Such a subject is time change when we got higher winds, we got trees coming down, we lose wires, things like that are happening. And we're losing power already in the bases. I love this. You know, again, it's something that's gotten weighed accordingly, but.
If needed, is it that amount something you could do in-house or through a budget or through a maintenance? Why eat up a court? We know that the, and I'm happy for O-U Bostie, Ulster Bosties by the way, the Ulster Bosties capital project took a percentage out of what we can do.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not unless we decide that.
Right, okay. But it's in the equation where it wouldn't be in normal years. So I'm just trying to, you know, I, I just don't want to buy stuff that we're not going to use. And I see schools buying very expensive power supplies, backups, generators with all, for all the right reasons. I just don't see them used. That's all. Thanks.
Peter, just a quick question. Do the generators run the heating plants if need be?
They run parts, but not.
But enough to, to keep the buildings tempered so they don't freeze in the wintertime?
Around 15%.
That's right.
Don't do as much work as you would think.
Issues that impact school, what's the, how close, and we've got kids, women, everything because of that. The only building that is 100% powered by generator is Austin High School. It can maintain communication and transportation. That's the only building that does.
Right. Would the transfer switches that were, would be implemented, would be able to accommodate emergency generators brought in? I mean, because that, that's ultimately the linchpin, right? Is the transfer switch has to accommodate if we're, if you were going to upgrade the system.
The transfer switch is, is designed and rated for generating. You couldn't bring a bigger generator in.
To accommodate the system.
Mike, on this, on the generator discussion, am I understanding that we're talking about the 160? It's about $160,000 worth of the project?
No, it's
220 something?
221,000. It's middle school page three.
Yeah, 221.
A third bold-faced number under total project cost. 221, I see. Or is that 47,000? I'm not sure.
Because I'm, I'm only seeing 119,000 and 47,000.
And you have the, the pad, the plumbing. So it is, it is a little over 200,000.
I'm, I'm, I'm only looking at the two.
Actually, it's 118 and 47,000.
That are in the 12 million dollar project. It's about 160,000.
Correct.
Because I'm, I'm, it's not 200.
That 221 in that first column, that includes the yellow generator pad fencing and bollards which were taken out?
Right.
They were already there. That's why they were taken out.
Correct.
Right. So it's, we're talking about 160. Yeah, it's still a lot of money. I'm just, yeah.
Do we have a generator here at the high school site?
Yes. We've generated every building except for the middle school.
Peter, I've got a question for you and I want to tell you that the initial list that you gave us with the priority, that was very useful to me and what I did this weekend, it really made me understand the project a lot better. So if you have an A priority and a B priority, A is definitely, we've got to do this. It's it's extremely important. What timeline do you define as a B priority?
That becomes a multimillion dollar question because we're looking right now at zero-impact destruction projects. Which means that the next zero-impact destruction project is 10 years from now.
Right.
So unless we do a tax-based impact project in between, we'll wait 10 years.
So you're saying, I guess my question is, if we let that be just out of it, can we, can we last 10 years? Or are you telling me it's got to be done within 10 years, a B priority?
As to how much of a gambler you are on such a matter?
What? No, I'm, but I'm not. So that, so what are you telling, what are you telling me? Does a B priority have to be done within 10 years?
If I really knew that, totally, I'd be buying lottery tickets. But yes, no, I get that. Does it have to be done? Some things are not as important as others and may be okay or should be okay to go that length of time. That's a, that's a compilation of the building condition surveys and our own assessments and we'll be fit to go into the project. It's things like the parking lot. The parking lot we took out of, out of the project, parking lot is a very expensive endeavor. It will not last 10 years. So at some point in time, we've got to figure out how we're going to repaint the high school parking lot and bring it up to form. It's not, it's not something you put a sneeze go down and it's going to go away. It's something that has to be rebuilt and be based up. So those are the kind of things that we're going to run into with infrastructure that there are things that are probably on here that we haven't even thought about addressing because we just had an issue with lowering of the lead levels in drinking water. Not to be at a large or anything, but we could be in situations where no matter what we do, we may not be able to meet those lead levels in certain areas of certain buildings. So there's infrastructure things and items that are going to pop up in the next 10 years. And we're going to figure, have to figure out how we're going to address them and take them. This list is dynamic because this list, this page is dated, the A-B-C list. I mean, things, things, and we add to that all the time because we find things that are an issue or a problem or something that needs to be addressed.
So one of the things that I would say about the A-B-C order on that that building condition survey that we gave you, support services sat for quite a lengthy amount of time and went through each one of those items and asked Pete detailed questions about each one of those items before we assigned a letter value to them to see what things were the most pressing. Those were As. What would be those next things? So if we got all the As out of the way, we would start tackling the Bs and, you know, so on and so forth. So it was a very methodical process that was used with the support services asking those, those questions of Pete and you know, and in some cases referring to, you know, quite honestly, Al and Tom here who have more knowledge in how long things last as far as construction goes. But that, they weren't, they weren't just grabbed out of the air.
Oh, no, I, that's, it's just, I'm trying to get an understanding of priority B.
Sometimes when you're looking, when sometimes when you're looking at an A and a B, it's sort of like an A minus and a B plus. Something might be a B, but it's close to an A, like there's gradations of it. So just as we were trying to keep within those dollar figures, that was, we were cognizant of that as well.
One thing that Pete, you did mention the parking lot will have to be taken up. So in, in the initial list, it said resurface and remark the parking lot. So now it's a total replacement. And that was one of my questions. So now you feel it has to be totally replaced and dug up?
Well, that, the way, it was, we had it assessed while we were looking at it, when we were going through this process. We had the engineers come in and look at it and assess it. And if you look at parking lots in certain areas where it's breaking up into a honeycomb pattern, those are areas where the only way to fix that is to go full depth and replace.
Okay. So that's definitely beyond a remark and, and resurface?
Not resurface, remark.
Okay.
But here's the thing with the lot. If you're going to do the field and do all this stuff where you're going to bring on cranes, tractors, all this stuff over your blacktop, it behooves us to do that after the fact.
Right.
So whether it's phase four of this project or the next project that comes up in the blip, it makes sense because I've seen where they've done their parking lots, then they do the field and that parking lot is devastated after the two years of construction because of all the heavy equipment.
And we had those conversations as well. So that's one of the other reasons why the, the parking lot was put as a separate, separate item. That would not be something that we would do.
Yeah, it's not in the primary project.
I think the other thing that grabs my attention, page two on the revised project cost towards the bottom. Light fixture replacement building-wide here at the high school. $672,000. Man.
That's, that was one of my questions too.
Now, I know that going to LED will save money, but some of these spaces have been done already. So I questioned the building-wide and I questioned, can't you also do an RFP off, off project? Can't you do an RFP with electricians and employ our own electrician, either our own or A electrician to roofs, to move systematically through classrooms and other spaces? I think these have been done. Are these LED? I mean, I, you know, again, $672,000. It's a big nugget for lights.
I don't believe we budget on a yearly basis, a maintenance project like that. I mean, some districts do. Some districts put in a line item of $500,000 and they go out for an RFP, they get a design team and they go out and bid lighting in all the classrooms. We don't build that into our, so we, we rely on the capital projects to pick those items up.
But maybe we rely on them too heavily for things as basic as lights. That's all I'm saying.
So maybe we should now start budgeting in, you know, a line item each and every year to pick up those annual maintenance projects you want to do. Because I think the mindset is, why spend $300,000? All right, there might be 600 there. We might save 300,000, but we're getting no aid on it if we do it in-house. We're getting 72% aid on a capital project. That means a lot.
So as an example, on the 2016 project, we looked at doing the cafeteria in an elementary school in-house. If we did in-house with materials and with our labor, it costs more than a debatable project.
Absolutely.
So that was a problem, okay? Yes, we can, we can.
Well, well, yes, it's, it's hard to compete with state aid at 70%. All I'm saying is, lights are not a complex piece necessarily, in all quantity, but it's not a complex animal as much as a turf field or an air conditioning system. I'm, I'm just bringing it up, not a forever strategy, but trying to create room in the budget for some of these larger ticket items. I believe that there's some things there.
Is that realistic though, Mike, to think that we're going to come up with the amount we need for a turf field and a track by taking away lights and generators? I don't think that's realistic.
Absolutely. There's $670,000 there.
But I think part of that is we might not be doing those maintenance projects every year, but we are putting a significant amount to that capital reserve that then we are using where we're getting the aid. So yeah, we could take that money instead and use it on a maintenance project, but to Mr. Miller's point, we could then be spending more money than if we're doing a capital project where we're getting the aid.
But if we build a project around turf fields and athletic fields, we're not going to get 72% state aid.
No, agree.
Hell of a lot less than that. That's why you have to watch those ratios. And that's what we're trying to do.
You have a capital reserve right now, do you not?
Yeah, we do.
As part of the budget. What have you, what has Highland Schools done with that reserve?
We're looking to use it now.
The last two projects we reduced, you're going to blow in at the cap.
Right. And we've done that with the last few projects, right?
And that's why I've asked Victoria to project a possible fund balance at the end of June that we could build back into this project. This might become a $20 million project. Then we can get our turf field. We can get some other things at zero impact. I don't, I don't know what, what came up.
So, yeah, so I did ask our Jason Schwartz at Bernie Donigan if they could run the numbers for us and they said, basically as a rule of thumb, we could assume that for every 100,000 of cash that we are able to come up with, we could get roughly an additional $290,000 worth of work. But that's only if it's fully debatable. So we're maxed out here at the high school. So, you know, I know we, we keep wanting to fit the turf and the track in, but it's above our cost allowance. So this won't help us with that.
Correct. I, I just threw that out.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a great thought and it's a great way to, to look ahead. But it's not going to, it's only going to be helpful in those instances.
We're getting 249, you said?
290.
299, 300,000.
It's 290.
We put a million in, we're going to get
3 million.
Another 2.6 million of, of construction.
Right. But I, I, you know, as I'm looking.
Which is a lot.
But as I'm, as I'm looking at our, our, you know, funds that are going to be left over, I don't think we're going to have anything like we did last year. I think, you know, with COVID, there was so much less expense that we really were able to save a lot. But I think this year, I actually need to speak with our superintendent about when I can tell the administrators that we're going to cut spending so that we can get a fund balance projection much earlier. Generally in districts, it's either February, sometime in February, maybe the very first week of March.
We're used to that.
So, so we will be doing that in the next week or so, letting everybody know. Spending is going to be cut off and then we'll be able to get a, a better solid projection.
Just, I know in the beginning, Joel, you had mentioned the Bosties, 3.3 million and how we're going to handle that. If, if we don't incorporate that into the capital project, then we're going to have to have a line item of the expense for that, right, in our, in our budget. We would have to include that. So that will raise our budget to overcome that deficit.
Correct. Go ahead.
Right. So that's why we, on the front of the sheet, Joel had worked out what the impact would be for each of those options. Keeping in mind that the first payment will be due on July 15th of this year of 2022.
The first payment is quite low, correct, for this year? I think it's like a couple hundred thousand bucks.
The first payment is 256,000. So, but if we're, if we're looking to maximize our money, I personally would feel better that we not look at cash. I don't want to take any cash we have left over and put it towards that.
So you're proposing to borrow it?
I would, I would prefer. If you look at their charts, a five-year borrowing is very similar to the five-year cash option. But whichever way the board would prefer to go, I'd prefer not to take our cash and use it.
I wouldn't want to borrow that for 20 years though.
For the five, the five years.
No, I think she's talking the five. You're, you're proposing the five.
Five-year finance.
Yeah. Because 20, that's quite a, quite a lengthy.
It's a lengthy term, but if you want to minimize the impact on the taxpayers in terms of if we're, if we're not incorporating it into our project, then the 20-year term is less of an annual impact and will be less of a surprise.
So if we did the five-year finance and just say simple star exemption. So if we did the five-year finance and just say simple star exemption, it's twenty-eight dollars a thousand, so probably a medium home in this area right now, you're looking at three fifty, four hundred thousand. So you're four times that. So you're increasing tax by a hundred and twenty-five dollars just to cover that.
Right.
I don't want the sound of that.
I mean, it's there. Right? It's based on a hundred thousand. It's just value of a hundred thousand, so your, your medium homes are three fifty, four hundred now. And that's probably being conservative. But again, I think we're kind of all over the map here. I think, Tom, you got to get us back to, let's follow a progression. If we're going to set a vote date and then work on how we're going to establish, we're just jumping all over the place.
We are discussing several different things here, Al. That's why I tried to direct the earlier part of the conversation, and each one of us talking about just the turf option, that sort of thing, just to get where we each stand on that and see how much more attention we have to pay to it.
That's the proposition we want right now. It's not a base proposition. It could be. That's the board's preference.
I agree on October. I'd say we could get everything.
I was pretty set on October to do a vote for a project, so we, again, let's work together.
I thought we decided this. Yeah. So I think we
October.
Thought we decided October next time.
Number one is done.
Check. But I think it was just making sure also that we have a schedule going forward.
That's what the vote would be.
The vote would be October.
That's what our, that's what our goal is.
Yeah, we had settled that in the last meeting.
Then August fifteenth, you got to be done.
Correct.
October seventh, then July thirtieth, you have to be ready for it.
I believe at the last meeting, we were going to take this issue of the turf field head on, because that's obviously an issue that we need to resolve one way or the other. How, are we going to move forward with the turf field and the track field? And if we're going to do it, in what format are we going to do it? I think that's the best way we can serve ourselves, because obviously, you're picking apart other issues in order to fund it, and then the other side is looking and saying, is it realistic that this turf field, which I want to compliment the people who did speak, because I definitely think you brought to light what the advantages would be, and I believe they're all sincere and realistic. And I know our athletic director mentioned that as well. Just for the sake of playing advocate on the other side, not that I necessarily adhere to the other side, but so that we get the full picture, we do have a wonderful grass field that was funded, the drainage and the function of it was funded in our last capital project. Mike, you mentioned the point, if we wait ten years out, it's going to be that much more expensive, yes, but there's that ten years less wear on the new turf field that we're going to be putting in. The idea of it being a classroom, I love the thought of outdoor classrooms and outdoor gathering space, but let's be realistic, is that's what going to happen for an athletic program's protected field that costs several million dollars? No. We're not going to have theater productions done on a turf field. We're not going to have people setting up regularly scheduling in on top of athletic activities. It's not going to become an outdoor classroom, just realistically speaking. I think it's a wonderful idea, and I think I would love to see us have more outdoor classrooms, but a turf field, I can't think of any place where that actually functions that way. If you, if you do, I'd love to hear about it. Again, I'm just playing a logical advocate in the other direction. If we pushed it forward, I would be entirely for us, putting it as a proposition, too, where the entire community gets to judge, because obviously, it would push us over the zero basis. It would cost the taxpayer more to do it, and I'd love to give the entire community a chance to make that decision on their own, because I think that falls out of our realm. But that, and for the reason, I think it definitely would be a unifying force. I think it would be wonderful for the athletic program. I think it would be a boost of confidence for Highland. But I think that's something the taxpayers should directly decide themselves.
I think we can all agree that we're leaning towards an October vote. Okay, let's nail something down here. I'm looking at October eighteenth for a vote.
It's a date I was going to say, because it's not Columbus Day, it's a Tuesday. I was going to say the first Tuesday, but that first Monday is Columbus Day. So I think if we go to the next one, October eighteenth, I think that makes sense.
Yeah. Can we agree on that? So let's give that as a target.
Yes.
Good? Good?
What's included? Not the press box, not the concession stand under that, right?
Just the date.
Just the date.
Date for the vote.
Date for a vote.
We circled back around again, Al.
Okay.
No, I, I brought the conversation back to that and said, let's set, let's set on
a date, okay? Let's get that going.
I thought the last
Sounds good.
Let me talk about the press box being part of the base because of
The value that's in there?
It's in the base.
Yeah. And so are the bleachers.
Right. No.
Do we have an agreement on the eighteenth for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
That's the date.
Tuesday, the eighteenth.
And can we just, I think just to, we've been here for an hour, and I think to make it, to meet those deadlines, I think it would be helpful if we say, at this meeting, we're going to discuss S Y Z. At this meeting, because otherwise, we're going to be debating the same
I think we had established that at the last meeting, I saw.
We didn't say specifically what we were going to accomplish, but I think we need to kind of set goals for ourselves as a board. Otherwise, we're not, we're going to be
Sixty-four.
Yeah, yeah, so I just think, you know, it's like set
I mean, I do think at the onset of this, I did, I did think that we should have a couple of goals, one of them being, are we going to include the BOSI's project into our project, or are we keeping it separate? My recollection was that it was a separate thing. It wasn't going to be discussed as part of this. So if we can get some conclusion to that, and then if, maybe we won't be able to get here tonight, but if can we get to, of those three big ticket items, are we looking at doing all three, doing two, or just is there one that stands out as the one that we're going to move forward so that we can get some direction?
What do you mean by big ticket items?
The maintenance building, the turf and track, and the air conditioning.
Okay.
Those were the three.
Right. I believe that, for me
Yeah.
The maintenance building is out, the air conditioning is out, and the field is in. We'll go after district-wide AC, the next go-around on this. That's Mike Pecatius, by the way.
I agree with that. I'm on the same page.
The second proposition, though, Mike?
You're with me?
On the second proposition.
Who's with me? Camille?
So now, I'm with the air conditioning, so the climate and the facilities, the athletic fields, I'm in favor of those two.
Yeah, we'll just go around the room here. So.
So are you, are you in agreement with Mike, or you want with the AC in?
With the AC in.
In.
So, yes, in agreement with Mike, with exception of the AC.
Okay.
Do we have a layout for what that would look like on the budget, on the vote?
I don't think so. I don't think that was part of it. District-wide AC?
District-wide AC?
I don't think it was. It's not on this. That's been
I believe there were some numbers there that were proposed.
I don't think we have district-wide AC, right, in there.
No, we did not.
We do not have district-wide AC. We
Those are large spaces.
If you remember, we had those conversations, and we heard what BOSI's district-wide, or project AC was, and that would have taken up almost the entire budget. So then that's when we went back to some of those larger areas, and we focused those areas. Some of them are already in the base project.
Correct.
Yes. Yeah, that, yes.
Right.
Right.
So, Camille, are you proposing that we look at district-wide?
What's in here? Yeah, so like the
Or just the areas that are in yellow for AC, and we try to include those back in?
Yeah, so what's, yes, are you in here?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm in the line with Mike. AC is out. The maintenance garage is out. I would like to see what Heather recommended, the turf field and the track as a separate item, a separate proposal.
All right. Al, we kind of skipped over you, we'll come back to you.
And before, I really, I love your idea of outdoor education, but it's just to have both of them together. I truly think that that would put our district in such a different trajectory. I'm so excited about that, but we can't have them both. Yep.
Go ahead, Al.
We're looking at additional propositions. Is that what our discussion is?
We were trying to narrow down what those big ticket items were. What is the pleasure of the board? Which items, if we were having to eliminate something, what would come off the list?
He spoke to big-ticket items. I asked him what he felt were the three big-ticket items, and that's all we're kind of just trying to get a consensus around what that would be.
I'm good with the, the maintenance facility and the turf and track.
All right. Heather?
Just clarification on the AC for a second, because some portions of that, as I look through this listing, are included in that.
Correct. Some of the AC, when we were talking big-ticket items, we were talking the whole district.
Okay.
And then I think Camille revised, and she said, basically, the items that she was looking at were the items that are marked out in yellow, which were the items that we took off to reduce the base project. So the items that are, I believe, in white
Are in.
Or green, those are already included in the base project. So right now, AC, at least from what I heard from Camille, was those items that are in yellow that were not included.
Right. So I'm in favor of how the AC in large spaces is in the base budget, and I'm also in favor of the turf field as an additional referendum.
Go ahead, Al.
None of the items, none of the AC pieces that you're talking about, though, are highlighted in yellow, correct?
Correct.
So then they're already, they're already there.
No, green is not included.
Green is not included.
It's in the twelve, the total. I just look at what's in that total.
I think she's talking about the white.
Revised project cost. It's in the twelve-seven.
Are they highlighted in white or green?
White.
Then they're in, right?
Right. Exactly.
So then you don't need to talk, you're not on the
I'm good with what's in here and the
Correct.
Sorry.
That's okay. No worries. We ran out of colors when we were doing this, so.
We should have budgeted for it.
You go ahead. We're up to you, Al.
So I, I think eventually, we're going to have to look at full facility air conditioning, but I think if we're increasing the amount of air conditioning and then the application of negative pressure, I think we're going to see a cooling effect throughout all the buildings. So if we have increased zones like we're providing for here, it will begin to ameliorate some of the other issues, because as they open the doors, it'll cool the other classrooms and as the children are circulating. So it'll have something of an ambient effect, but I do think it's something we have to keep on our radar in the future, moving towards that. So I think that air conditioning issue in my mind is settled. The turf field, for the reasons mentioned, I think is a wonderful idea. I think it's a unifying force, but I think it absolutely has to be a second proposition with the community knowing that it would increase the tax basis. I think it has nothing to do with the main project, because it is such a big-ticket item, and we do have to do the track along with it. The facilities, I'm so torn about that, because I respect what Al's saying about the amount we've invested in equipment, and the more we have, the stronger infrastructure we have, the better able we are to do what Mike is suggesting, and that is doing a lot of in-house work, a lot of in-house maintenance, in order to prevent the deterioration that leads us to needing more and more capital improvements. However, I would like to see us put a lot of thought into that and where it goes, if we can possibly access some of the acreage we have back here, if it's something, I just, I wonder if we can do it properly in the small amount of time that we have. And I know it's, to do nothing at all isn't, isn't better. But I think, given the enthusiasm towards the track, I think we might have to take the facility off. I'd also like to see what you mentioned, Sue, in terms of outdoor education, I'm a huge advocate for as well. If we're going to start picking apart, when we get through this process or move forward in this process, I'd like us to, if we're going to examine things the way Mike is looking at it, I'd like us to look at possibly putting outdoor educational pavilions into the, into the large project, or putting more technological issues into the project, if we find that we can shift some of the smaller things around. But for tonight's purpose, I support the track and field as the secondary proposition and the main proposition the way it is.
Okay. I support the track, the field, and the press box area and the bleacher area around it.
That's already in the main.
I'm just saying, that's a big, that's a big chunk of money regardless.
Right.
I want to say that I'm for that. At the same time, I see the value in having a building, some kind of enclosure built for our maintenance equipment. We put a lot of money into that, and we have to try to protect it and keep it close by also. So somewhere's on this campus, I think we will try to find a piece, a piece of land, that's our design, to keep it close to the bus garage and, you know, near the high school. So, yes, maintenance building, and as far as a large sum of money that we're shooting to support, that would be track and field. Thank you.
There's your numbers. That wins.
Everybody is supporting the track and the turf.
I win.
You good?
Sue is thinking I didn't
Well, I wanted to hear from her.
She went, she went.
She went. Yeah, she went.
You went quickly.
She was, she was.
Okay.
Turf and track, pretty much.
No, actually, you clarified, the air conditioning is
Turf and track is pretty much supported in some form, whether it's in a project or as a standalone proposition. So we have to figure out how we're going to accommodate that. AC is, as we know, some of it's already being taken care of in the project, and there are some, maybe some other large areas we can fit in, maybe. Maintenance building? Al, you and I are the only two that are proposing that. So, not to say some of this stuff isn't dead, but I'd say right off the bat, turf and track, field with, I'm going to put a condition on that, as long as the other structures go with it. You know, the press box.
It's all in there.
Just want to make, make sure we don't, yeah.
Yeah, I think we should probably take a look at that page so that everybody's aware of what is in and what a second proposition would be if we're going to do proposition one, proposition two. So if we can turn to the first page of that document, incorporated in the project already is a press box and exterior bleachers. The athletic field running track and the athletic field turf, that's the three-point-one that is grayed out here, meaning that it was not included in the revised base project. So if the board is looking to put that into the base project, then we need to remove three-point-one, or if you're going above and beyond and putting it in one project, that's, but I thought we had talked about a base project and then the athletic fields and track as a subcomponent, like a second project, that was contingent upon number-one passing, so that the community could have a vote on both.
Is there anyone adverse to that, to having it as a second proposition?
Well, I was under the impression that
Support Services was recommending that the track and, that the track resurfacing was in the project. We had to do that.
No, no.
No. No.
No, I think it was in December that it was decided, December or November, that we, the decision was to pull those out, to get those numbers down, because once we costed everything out, I think the whole thing was thirty-one million?
We were sure
So then some decisions were made, and we went on what folks were saying at this table about pulling pieces out and making them a second proposition, making the press box and the exterior bleachers part of the main project, and then if folks in the community truly supported the track and field, that they would come out and give a second vote for that piece.
Okay.
And if they didn't, then at least the press box and the bleachers would be replaced and repaired, and we wouldn't be doing it backwards. We wouldn't be doing the field and then having to go in and do bleachers and a press box at a later date, which would be, you know, you're going in there digging up that whole area. You may as well do it all at the time.
And I think I supported the packaging of all those components, so that's fine.
I think it makes sense, just from kind of reliving back the last time that we put the track and field as part of our proposal. I mean, it became really a target, right? And that could still be the case, but maybe it's not. Maybe community's feelings have changed on that, but at least it gives that opportunity to say, you know, there is stuff that the building needs, and here's the base proposition. And on top of that, if that passes, the opportunity to also have this other option is out there as well. I really think it makes sense to separate out, and I agree with the great idea that came our way.
And I think that we're in a unique position now. We have so many community members that are for that piece, to make that field look different than it ever has, that I think we have allies out there to help sell this project. So they're going to sell this project by saying, we need votes yes on that first proposition, so that our second proposition, that athletic field, is a go. But it also lets those folks who don't want athletics, that they, we don't want them to come out and vote everything down. If they don't want to vote on the track, that's their right to do so.
Yeah.
But I do think that our community, the folks that come out in the months of September and October and are utilizing that field, I do think that if we get that stuff out there and it's visible, there will be a buzz at every single football game that's on that field, and I think Janine is
Football game, soccer game, lacrosse game, let's not limit.
And I think she's going to be out there helping to get it passed.
Yes.
As is Brian Haldeman.
Look, I think it's, the experience out there is wonderful, as was pointed out. You really get a sense of the Highland community when you're out there, and everybody's gathered for one purpose as a community. But we have to put it to the taxpayers.
I make it clear to all, it's an uphill battle regardless.
Absolutely.
This BOSI's thing, is that a third proposition?
No, that's done.
No.
We did that.
Okay. So that's not, so we are really looking at two propositions in front of the taxpayer as it relates to the capital project.
But that's if we decide, the other thing that the superintendent was bringing up, how do we, we've already agreed to finance our portion of the BOSI's project, so we have to talk about how are we going to present that?
Yeah, I think the bigger question is, what is the board's wish as how we will move forward financing that BOSI's project? Are we going to take it out of our dropping off debt, or are we going to keep it as a separate thing?
That sounds like the next topic.
I would say that is.
That we have to have around. I, and I'm going to tell you, coming off of our local tax bills here, right, still tax season, and seeing the rise in prices in general of approximately 12% to 20% across the board, I'm looking at that BOSI's portion being part of that capital amount.
Ouch. I know. I know.
I know it's ouch, but in good conscience, costs are going up, we're going to make the BOSI's thing, you know, there's got to be some, it's a parameter. That's how I feel.
But I have the question, how, you could say that on one side and then support the track and field on the other. It seems like you're diametrically opposed to yourself.
The community will decide. That's all I, all I ever asked was for an opportunity, for the community.
Well, the track and field is going to be above and beyond.
It will be above and beyond.
So that's a taxpayer's choice to make that, saying
So the numbers we had from Bernie Donigan, do they include us incorporating the BOSI's? They did?
If you look at this chart.
Right, this revised one. Okay.
Now, just look at this front page. It will tell you what the cost is going to be if we just go with a $12.7 million project, and then we finance the BOSI's. You can add those two together. If we go with the $12.7 plus the track, and then we put the BOSI's financing in, just add it up, and you'll be able to see what the cost is for $100,000.
May I like to hear what Victoria has to say, like your suggestions as to how we should proceed?
I think the other thing to remember is that when we originally were talking about our project and we spoke to Bernie Donigan's representative and said, what would we have to do to incorporate BOSI's to have no tax impact, he said that our project would need to be cut even more, down to 11 million.
Yeah.
Right.
So if we want to keep BOSI's within our no-impact, we have to cut more from this project, whereas, I mean, we already started with $31 million in scope and cut it down to $12.7, thinking that we then had a little bit of wiggle room to go up to the $15.5. Now we're going to have to cut it back down to 11.
I took a look at those numbers. It was like replacing all the boilers and a few other items.
That's the reality. If that is, if that's, scenarios.
Sue.
You're saying if we bring it down to, I'm just trying to understand your comment.
So is that what you're
So if we bring it down to, to make it completely tax-neutral with the BOSI's included, we're down to basically the boiler and a few other items.
But that's what you're advocating, though, Mike, is you're saying, replace the boilers, nothing else, put the track and field on.
I'm saying I support replacing of the boilers and some other stuff. The Support Services Committee could decide what that other stuff is. I hope it wouldn't be high school lights.
Well, I guess I have to, and I'm going to be quite candid here, I'm a little bit surprised, only in that, when we had this discussion about BOSI's, it was the concern that it would in fact cut into the things we need to repair and fix here in our own home district. We had decided that we wanted to support BOSI's, but I wasn't aware that we were going to be doing it at the expense of our own district and our own, we are stationed here to protect the Highland Central School District, and to make sure it's functioning at its best capacity, for safety and for education and for health purposes. I just, I'm mystified that you can take that stance.
No, no mystery. So you're saying that I changed my stance. The answer is yes. Since that, we had that conversation, two criteria came to my attention. Number one, the local town tax bills and how they're adjusted, and the cost of that for $100,000. And we got those right now in January. The other thing was, I thought that costs were, I expected costs due to COVID were going to go up and come back down. The trend right now is, they're going up, they're not going to come back down. We're talking about 15% to 20%. That's everyday goods that everybody needs, and that might continue to increase. So those two realities caused me to reevaluate my position.
Well, that's the nature of sticky prices in the economic system, and that's established, that they'll remain up for a while, but that's also what
I don't want you to be dump-founded, though. I want you to be clear as to why I'm making the rationale, and those are the two criteria.
What they seem counter, they seem contrary to one another, Michael, is my point.
So Ed, what's your position? What, how do you feel?
Well, I'm, okay, taking that assumption, and with total respect, because I am also a taxpayer, and I feel the burden very much so. However, the prices we're looking at, when you can say, and you're exactly right, the prices have elevated at a minimum 15% to 20% across the board. Food prices, everything from, my shopping bills have gone up 25%. Gas prices have gone up, and this is the nature of supply and demand, and the fact that we're having a distribution issue. I'm facing it every day with, I have quotes on building projects that were put in only two months ago, and then we have to go back, and already we have 16% jump, just even two-month time. So, but my point here is, if we look at the actual breakdown, instead of just, and I'm not saying that you're posturing, but the, it seems to me that if we look at what it costs the taxpayer and versus what they're getting, or what we're building or creating here, and again, I'm not at all being insensitive to the needs of a taxpayer, being one myself, the, when we're talking about a McDonald's bill, is what, you know, one last night at McDonald's is covering, more than covering what the increase in taxes would be. I know one time we talked about it as a cup of coffee at Starbucks, once a month, is the difference that we end up laying. I just think we have to be realistic about, how much is this impact, and what is the realistic impact? I'm not looking to raise taxes on anybody, but I think as a community, when we come together and share that burden, we can accomplish wonderful things as a shared community.
So part of the project or separate?
BOSI's.
Well, no, because, well, the idea being, well, the reason we're having this discussion is because we say, if we incorporate BOSI's to part of the project, we have no project. That's basically what we're saying. All of the things that we've identified, we've spent months identifying the things we need.
But I think, Ed, that also defeats the purpose of why we put in place a capital reserve several years ago, is to help offset the costs of our own projects, to try to keep them cost-neutral to the taxpayers. And if we're going to dump the $3.3 million BOSI's package into this to have a zero impact to the taxpayers, then we're kind of defeating the purpose of why we built that capital reserve.
Honestly, I thought the purpose of the capital reserve was to do some capital work, like in-house and on our own. That's not, that's not true. It's there to enhance future capital projects, and it will in this case, too.
I believe every district currently is using their capital reserve to offset the tax impact on their, on their community.
Victoria, tell me if my thinking is correct. If we want to keep this totally tax-neutral, and if we want to have the vote referendum on the turf and the track, we would have to peel about $3 million bucks off the base project right now as it stands, correct? If we wanted to keep it totally tax-neutral.
And have the track and field in there as tax-neutral.
Right. We would still want to keep, we want that, let's say we want it. Right now, we have a $12 million project. We're already committed to BOSI's. We have to do it.
Right.
So I'm thinking totally, totally tax-neutral. We have to take $3 million bucks off of the $12 million project.
About? More than that, because just taking BOSI's into account, we'd have to peel off over a million. And then the 3.1 is not adable. The turf and track is not adable.
Right, right. If that was a separate referendum.
So it's going to be even more.
If it was a separate referendum, we want
Even being part of this referendum, right, based on our ratios?
I thought you were just saying to have everything all-inclusive and tax-neutral.
Not the turf, you're not talking about turf and track?
Right. We still want the turf and track as a separate.
Oh, as a separate.
Because we want to keep that out there. We're already committed to BOSI's.
Right. So what Bernie Donigan said to us
We want the whole kit and caboodle tax-neutral. I'm thinking we have to peel nine, excuse me, $3 million off the $12 million base project.
What they had originally said to us, to include BOSI's and be tax-neutral, we would need to have our base project be around 11 million. It's 12.7 now, not including the turf and track, because we can go up to 15.5, and we're at 12.7.
My point is to keep that turf and track as tax-neutral.
Oh, to keep the turf and track tax-neutral, then it would probably be well over $4 million additional that we need to pull out.
So take $4 million bucks off of the $12 million.
So we're getting barely
Can you even do the boilers?
Okay. All right. Oh, it's in kind of the ballpark. All right. Thank you.
I'm in favor of not incorporating the BOSI's project, for the reasons, you know, not to take away from, you know, our district. That's kind of my rationale behind that.
I agree with Camille on that. I am in favor of keeping the BOSI's separate from what we are looking at for our district. I think we have put a lot of effort and time into really building that capital reserve so that we can use it, and then looking at, you know, the taxes that we have or the debt that we have dropping off to be able to fill, and I think we owe it to our district, so I'm in favor of keeping it separate.
I agree. I think the optics would be better, a $12 million project, plus an additional referendum for the turf and track for $3 million. So I just think a $15 million project, it's, I just think the optics would be better to keep it at $12 million.
I'm not in favor of
I'm not in favor of the BOSI's project being incorporated into our capital project standalone.
I don't want to see that either, and the five-year financing, you know, the sad thing about this is, we wouldn't even be having this conversation right now if the BOSI's project was next year, in other words, if they came out with it then. It's just timing, which is sad. So Five to two. All right, so, separate. Right now, yeah. Vote us five to two, five four, five for keeping it separate, and two not.
Who said, who's the not?
Mike and Sue.
Oh, Sue.
No, no, separate.
She was the opposite, yeah.
Oh. You know, I don't want it
Six to one.
Six to one.
Sorry, I misunderstood what you said. My fault. So October 18, we're going to look at turf and track, keep the BOSI's project separate, turf and track as a separate proposition? Is that what I'm hearing from everyone around the table?
Yes.
Yes.
I think that's
Contingent on the first one.
Right.
I guess we just need to decide, are we looking at the 12.7, or are we looking at the 15.5?
No, the 12.
12, we have to, yeah.
Well, 12, you can do the 12 and then the second, or the 15.5 and then the second.
The 15.5
incorporates the BOSI's.
No.
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 No, no, no. There were four propositions. There was a 12.7 with turf.
I thought the 15 was BOSI's.
No, the 15 is some of those extra items. So maybe we should, think, you want to solve that tonight?
Yeah.
Or we want to wait till Tuesday?
Victoria says no.
I think we're
I think we've gotten some good leadway, I mean, some, I mean, if there's some, if there's a direction that you would like to have prepared for next Tuesday, I think we need to hear that now, so that we have a couple of days to get that together.
I think, oh, sorry, go ahead, so, go ahead. I saw you getting ready.
Go ahead.
Mr. Miller, Peter, Mike brought up, wherever he is, he brought up a really good point about the lights, and I started looking at the list, and it's not only the 673,000 at the high school, but it's also in there for the elementary school for 475,000. So we're talking over a million bucks of the base project in lighting, and I noticed they were both B items. Is there something, maybe, we could relook at that, or maybe think about it for next meeting?
Yeah, we can look at that. Just be aware that the lighting line includes new ceiling grids and new floors.
That's when, Sue, when we had the tour of the elementary school.
Yeah, it's just a lot of money. It's a big chunk.
Well, and if you remember, when we toured the elementary school, we were refurnishing, refurbishing all of those classroom spaces, the tiles, the walls. So to leave those old fixtures and those old tile structures, you're going to have this beautiful space and then not-so-beautiful up top. So I think the idea was, once we were in there and gutting the place, let's do it all at one time, and
It wasn't simply bulbs.
And get the aid on it at the same time.
And I think that's a very good point. I think we got to keep remembering that, because yes, when you look at it, 1.1 million on lights, it sounds like a lot, but I think it's more than that. It's the ceiling tiles, it's the grids, it's the brand-new classroom that you want to go along with it. I think it's the whole thing. We have to keep that conversation in mind.
The ceiling grid and many of the floors in the elementary school are original to the building.
And if you want to, if you could have been there when they redid the nurses' office this year, they had to, they had to steal pieces from parts of ceilings that are hidden to recreate the spot that they opened up, because you couldn't buy that gridding anymore. So, and they did a great job refurbishing that and getting it to looking the way it does right now, but that was an in-house project.
The only thing I was going to ask for, and it doesn't necessarily need to be Tuesday, but I know we had talked about it a little bit at the last meeting, is looking at, you know, whether it's the 12.7 and the 15.5, we have a lot of building needs in there. I would really like to see a portion of that maybe be some educational, thank you very much, some educational opportunities.
We talked about that, and one of the things, especially with the redoing of the elementary classrooms, you know, to get that electric along the, that right there is just going to open the flexibility of those rooms. That will allow for different things to be done. That right now, being tethered to one corner technology-wise, really, it impedes things. So it's opening, so right there, that's a, that was one. The other was the middle school, just, you know, bringing that media center up to modern age. Look at this media center. It looks absolutely beautiful and has the capability of doing wonderful things in it. So So, yeah, so those conversations were had, and it's just, you know, trying to just get the infrastructure in a way that we have some flexibility. So, for instance, in the last project, one of the things was making those technology labs flexible spaces so there's power in the floors, there's power in the walls, so that things can move around and nothing has to stay in a traditional way and being flexible with the space. So, but I also, I agree that we should look at some outdoor learning spaces. I know the elementary school for years has been looking for, to put a pavilion up. The playground committee has raised money for years for that. If that could be part of a project in some way, whether it's in conjunction with that group, I just think that, you know, getting kids outside is so important. And down there especially, when it's hot on that second floor and you try to get them down outside, you think there's a lot of trees there until everyone's outside, and there are not a lot of trees on that property.
Not at that time of day.
You know, so...
Yeah, no, those are two very good, very good points, and that's the stuff that I think makes sense to put into context.
And there was some money allocated in the COVID grants for some outdoor stuff as well.
Okay. Good. Good to know.
Yeah, I just, I guess three comments, you know, the kind of echoing what's been said with Heather, and I know, Ed, you brought up in the past, too, is that, I think, we look at what we're proposing in the capital project, there's a lot of upkeep and maintenance that's been overdue. And unfortunately, we're not enhancing our classroom spaces as much as I would have hoped we would. So I'm thinking maybe there's all this money that's coming in, maybe we can find other ways to do that. But that's kind of my frustration with this plan is that it's mostly just infrastructure work and not enhancing our spaces. And then, going back to the outdoor space, like, you know, if they build it, you know, they will come. So I think, knowing that this work, if approved, wouldn't happen tomorrow. So I think there'll be time with, you know, planning, curriculum planning to incorporate outdoor spaces. I think there's a way to do that, and working with athletic, you know, PE department, and I think there's ways to make that space possible if it's there. My second comment is, if, just to clarify, if our color-coded, if we're looking at this, the 12.7, that's the revised project cost column, and then the total project cost would be the 15.5. So I just want to make sure that, for, that I'm looking at the right items within each of those numbers.
The revised project column is the 12.7. That's all of the items that Support Services had identified. The 15.5 was originally what Bernie Donigan said we could potentially go to as a maximum cost. So we have not identified anything between the 12.7 and the 15.5. So that's, I think, what Superintendent Brer was trying to...
To ascertain, what direction do we want to go? Of those, so if you take a look at the yellow highlighted and green highlighted sections, those would be the areas that we would be looking to bring up so that we could get to the 15.5. But we started with the 12.7 because we were trying to stay cost-neutral.
And then, just the last request that we could, before we just think about what we want to think about, I guess, our goals for our next discussion. So just thinking about, so I'm just looking at the BOSI's, thinking about the financing, that's a piece that's still there, and then even, and then I guess 12.7 or the 15.5. So I think maybe that's kind of our goals, or just, we can kind of walk away with that understanding before our next meeting.
And the other thing I would say is, if you take a look through this, I mean, Support Services has been over it a number of times, and we can go back and we can look at items to consider taking out or reassessing. If there's something in here, please let one of the folks on Support Services or myself know so that we have some guidance. If we could get that in the next day or two, that would be, that would be very helpful, and we could come up with, I think we pretty easily could come up with a revised list. Especially which items in those highlighted areas that are not included in the revised project, which items would be most, you know, important to you to get in there to get us up to the 15.5, if that's the project that the board ultimately decides upon.
And only speak for myself, I'm only looking at the white, because I am looking for the BOSI's portion to be part of that 15 and change.
Yeah, I think, I think you were the only one, Mr. Bacatzis, just...
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. The rest decided while you were...
Okay. While I was away. So, it's in excess, and we're looking at the whole 15.
Keeping, well, not necessarily the 15. We're still costing between the 12.7 and the 15, but the BOSI's was a separate, not going to be included as the, you know, into that financing. Anything else for tonight?
I think that was good progress.
I think we got a lot done. I could stay here for three more hours if we were gonna get this much done in the next three hours, seriously.
Oh, no, thanks. Yeah.
I know you don't, but, I mean, when we...
That's why we have another separate one for three hours.
Well, I would say that when we, when we do this in conjunction with our regular board meetings, we get to the end of the night, it's time for the building project, and we run out of steam, so...
Well, I think we're seeing the value in the focus tonight, just on the capital.
Absolutely.
You know, we're not burdened with some of these other items.
Yep.
Victoria, since we're kind of all in agreement that we're gonna keep the BOSI's separate, so you're going to go out for financing on BOSI's. So could you walk us through how you do that? So every year, when a payment comes up, you're going to borrow that, and then it'll just get bigger and bigger and bigger, and then you term it out? Is that how you do it?
It's actually in the...
It's on this first page.
It's in the, in the presentation that BOSI's had provided us. So it depends on, it depends on which financing the board decides to do. But basically, if we're doing the five-year financing, I believe we would do a ban every year for the first five years. Otherwise, I believe we do a long-term bond. But it's in their presentation.
So, can I, I'm just asking a question on this, just because it's my first time really going through this process. But if we were to finance that for 20 years, to bring that amount down for taxpayers at the $100,000, and then we were to ride this project out for 10 years and there was a drop-off in our debt 10 years from now, could we take the retiring debt at that point and pay off the BOSI's 10 years from now?
That would depend on the terms of the bond.
Are there penalties?
Yeah, depends on how it's sold to the bondholders, because for people who purchase...
There's no penalty for paying off the BOSI's portion, really.
So I'm just thinking, maybe we go with the 20-year financing, and 10 years down the road, so that right now, we bring a lower amount to, impact to the taxpayer upfront for 10 years, because we also have our project going on. And then, 10 years from now, when that debt starts to fall off, could we up the payments? So maybe that's a question that we can call them on to kind of, we can kind of accelerate it 10 years from now. It's just another way to keep that impact down right now.
Generally, generally, when a municipal bond is sold and people invest in it, they want to know, it'll, it'll end up being different interest rates if it's callable, and if they know, you know, if you purchase a bond and you're gonna get interest from it for 20 years, that's kind of how people structure their investments on the personal side. So...
Right.
If, if there's a chance that they won't be getting that income stream for 20 years, that is just a different structure for prices.
Well, maybe we don't tell them until 10 years from now.
You have to, you have to disclose that.
I think all those options exist, but I like the line of thinking.
So, but the numbers we're looking at here, if they go with the 20-year financing, that we're looking at $14 for the year for every $100,000.
Correct.
So that was my point, Mike, is for eliminating all the infrastructure support we would do for the sake of eliminating $14 a year from the taxpayer, it just seems like we weren't really functioning in our, what we're designated to do here. That was just my feeling.
Well said. My budget's $2.
Well, and if you look at the senior with the star exemption, you know, if they have a $400,000 house, it's $12 for the year, you know?
Yeah.
And if you look up above, if you do the 15.5 plus the 3.1, that's another $12. So it's $24 for the year if we finance in that way.
Yeah, the numbers I was quoting were with no exemptions at all. That was...
Yeah. Well, I mean, I'm always looking at, you know, the folks that are on that limited income and don't have a cost-of-living adjustment coming in, and, you know, we want to, we want to be cognizant of them as well.
Very much so, yes.
We are addressing that.
Regarding the maintenance and operations facility, if we're not going with the new, it's assumed that we're moving forward with the maintenance and repair bays and the roof replacement there, right?
Yes.
We've got to maintain the existing structure.
Yes, there were certain things with the maintenance facility that would not be in there if we were building a new one.
Okay.
Yes.
Are we all okay with our, with our progress tonight? Is there any very compelling issues we have to talk about?
We did a good job?
We've...
You're making me feel better.
By starting, by going in this direction, we are concerned with our senior citizens and taxpayers.
Of course.
The structuring of the project and/or propositions, the way they're laid out right now, we're giving a lot more people the opportunity to say, to vote yes, that, as they can afford it, they'll vote yes definitively on the base project. And for those in the community that need or want to see the turf project and the associated items with that go through, well, that part of the community's got to step up.
They're gonna rally the support. Looking at you, Jadee.
To, to make it happen or to get it close.
Yeah.
So...
Every one of those people who was here tonight represents at least 10 to 20 people.
Yeah.
That's the start of something. But you're correct, the community will have to support that.
Yeah, they'll have to support it, and we're giving them an opportunity to do that. So, I think that was our, the last time we put a capital...
Absolutely, but I just want, I just want that group to realize that we did propose, what was it, Peter, eight, nine years ago, and that one proposition that got defeated that included a turf field at that point in time?
Yeah.
And then, it's 14, 15, not too many years ago. And we brought a steering committee in of 20, 21 community members, and they elected not to go forward with the revote, including a turf field then. So they really got to rally the support because the community wasn't in favor. I always was, and I pushed for it. I was always in favor of turf field. So, I mean, they got to realize that. I want to ask the board if they would entertain the support service coming back and looking at a maintenance facility and possibly including that in a proposition, too, which would be your base, your turf and track, and then a maintenance facility, to try to possibly massage the numbers that are out here right now and the location and all that. Just a thought.
Dave, I think we stand a good chance of that because the community has overwhelmingly supported that maintenance bond that we had out a few years ago. So, they might see the value in that, too.
I'm not in favor of coupling that. You know, the athletic facilities are already a gamble based on previous history, so I just think adding too much could also, same reason why someone may turn away the one, the athletic facilities inside of the base, be the same reason why someone may not vote for the athletic facilities because the maintenance there and vice versa. So I just think, I'm in favor of keeping them separate if that's the direction that we go. It just seems like, too, with the maintenance facility, there was a lot of unknown costs, you know, thinking about the location, so even the numbers that are here may be larger. So I think for me, just, I don't think we've done enough research at this point to truly understand the cost of a new maintenance facility.
Yeah, I think, as much as I support a maintenance facility, I think to link that to the field issue would be unfair at this point. However, if we decided to put a third proposition, and so if we make proposition one, in order for two or three to pass, one would have to pass, but after that, you could vote for two or three in the yea or nay, and again, leave it to the taxpayer. I'd be open to that as my personal stance, but I think it would be unfair to hinge it to the turf issue.
Any other discussions? Pete, go ahead.
I'm gonna add a colorize for a second. Because I feel, I've been here for 15 years, and we started off, and I was here when we started doing capital projects. When I came here, we had a $78 million list, a 15-year-old one. Correct?
Yep.
We've done a tremendous amount over that 15 years. The unfortunate thing is, due to the time period before that, there's a lot of infrastructure and things that were not done in the buildings. And that's why we're at the point where we are now, where we're kind of playing catch-up with some of these things that is somewhat affecting, if you want to call it classroom space and environments like that. But we're getting there. We're getting there fairly quickly. And last year, we tried some stuff, and it's all according to whether we can get capable people to do some more in-house projects and improve things. We did the library, pretty much mostly in-house. Okay? And we continue going in that direction. We will improve classroom space and the environment. I mean, just last year, we concentrated heavily on the middle school and polished up the middle school. The middle school looks the best it's looked in decades. There's more work to do. All of course is different, but it's all according to how we fund it, how we get it done, and make sure that the heat comes on and the lights come on and everything that we need that goes with it. That impacts where our roof's at. We can't predict it.
And again, I mean, we often sit here at our board meetings and we listen to our inspection report from our maintenance department on the buses, and we praise them for almost 100%. And I'm just gonna say this, and this might not be the thing to say, but we're not rewarding them with anything. They're, they're working out of a 1960 bus facility right now with bus lifts that are antiquated, one that doesn't even work. And we're, we're looking at not providing them with the, an updated facility that brings them into the 21st century and continue to main or maintain our bus fleet at optimum levels they're doing right now in an antiquated building and facility.
Understood, Al, but this project would give them two beautiful lifts to work on those buses and a nice new roof. It's not a bad start.
The old saying, you're putting a Band-Aid on something that's eventually going to give out, and that Band-Aid is not gonna save it.
Well, Al, and this is sincerely curious, would there be federal money or state money helping us with the maintenance facility as well? Does that fit into the formula? No. So that would be, that's completely funded on our own. So I'm wondering if it doesn't come into the issue if we don't put it into the proposition. Maybe it's something we need to look at, you know, building, just incorporating. I know we can't build the entire structure, but maybe we have to start budgeting for regular improvements towards that end. And if we can't pour a new foundation and build a new building, maybe we need to start budgeting for, in order to improve the facilities.
We're gonna throw in a nice entrance courtesy of a local sword company. What's the name of that company? What's that? We're gonna get you a nice main entrance over that.
Iron Sword.
Iron Sword, there you go. He didn't like that at all.
We, we are having conversations right now, but...
It, it sounds like we're at the point of the meeting where we say, any other, Mr. Prezis, or any other...
Again, just one more thing about the maintenance building. That's all I'm gonna say. We, we have, we kind of have an idea of a spot that we're looking at, is that correct? We have an idea of the location. Do we, right?
On the hill.
Right, on the hill. So what I'm saying is, is there anybody earmark some funding to see the constructibility of that piece of property? Because I know that's in the back of our... Because I know that's in the back of our mind, what we might encounter and what it would cost to overcome that and make it usable. One more, one more thought.
In my opinion, not from the project. I don't know why this isn't working, but if the board is not in agreement that we should be moving forward with that, I wouldn't want to take money out of the project to do that work that is going to take away from things that we are going to do. So...
Just might calm the conversation down, but, you know, there's what that would cost.
Just on that point, Pete, who said that? So, on that point, the stuff that's in here was based on engineer here looking at the site and the surveys, so they came up with a yes to it.
Okay.
So, that was not just a pick it off the wall thing. It was done by assessing the site and looking at it.
I wouldn't want to do anything additionally if we weren't seriously going to entertain that type of a project right now.
He just said what I wanted to hear.
So, it was assessed?
Yeah. Alright, do we have anything else for the good and welfare of the district?
The only thing I wanted to say is acknowledge the two students that we have here helping us out with our audio. I appreciate it. I think the audio has been much improved this meeting. So, thank you guys for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Motion to adjourn? Camille?
Yes.
Heather? Thank you, Heather. You've been in on every vote tonight.
Ready.
Very, very proactive with that arm.